Welcome to the Monday, April 20th, 2020, Special City Council Meeting. We're participating remotely again because of the governor's continued orders. And we're all here, we're all present, and we'll start with a roll call to approve it. City Clerk?
Mayor Robinson?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Present.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on?
Here.
Thank you.
So before we approve the agenda, there are a couple of procedural items we need to address. In-person attendance at council meetings by council members and the public is prohibited by the governor's stay-at-home orders, which currently expire at 11:59 PM on May 4th. Also, another emergency order issued by the governor concerning the Open Public Meetings Act restricts the topics that may be discussed during the council meeting. As a result, there are several provisions in the council's procedural rules, Resolution 8928, that the council should temporarily suspend, one involving the council's ability to participate remotely, and the other involving the process for accepting communication from the public. Section 13 of Resolution 8928 allows a council procedural vote to be temporarily suspended. When suspension is requested and no objection offered, then I, as mayor, may announce the rule suspended. So Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
I certainly will. I move to suspend until May 5th, 2020, the provisions in Section 6.E of Resolution 6928 concerning remote participation by council members to allow all council members to participate remotely.
Second.
Is there any objection to this motion? Then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that we've now adopted that. The motion is adopted and that rule is suspended. Now I move to suspend until May 5th, 2020, the provisions in Section 8D of Resolution 8928 concerning oral communications from the public to allow public comment to be provided in writing on the topics on the meeting agenda and read during the council meeting.
Is procedural okay for you to make that motion, Mayor? Or do you want me to make that motion?
I'd like you to make it, please.
Okay, I move to suspend until May 5th, 2020, the provisions in Section 8.D of Resolution 8928 concerning-
Second.
-communications from the public to allow public comment to be provided in writing on the topics on the meeting agenda and read during the council meeting.
Okay, second. Is any objections to this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, excuse me. And as some of you may know, unconcernedly, the amount of domestic violence cases have increased significantly during this crisis. And as a result, our women's homeless population has increased significantly. And this is just a really unfortunate turn of events that our human service agencies are working very hard to help the people who are struggling at this time. So in honor of this Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I would like to have Councilmember Stokes read the following proclamation.
Okay, the City of Bellevue proclamation, "Whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas in King County, more than 7,400 adults and children received specialized assistance from organizations or programming for sexual assault victims in 2019. And whereas demand for services to help visitors heal, survivors heal, has increased significantly since 2016, reflecting the cultural shift that is taking place that has prompted many survivors who have remained silent to now speak up and seek the help they need to heal. And whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic, families are staying at home under the governor's stay-home, stay-healthy order during a time of stress. And whereas the Bellevue Police Department reports a 14% increase in domestic disturbance calls during this time when social distancing requirements have been in place. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in and compounded by racist, gender, sexual orientation, and other forms of oppression. And whereas King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services for survivors for various race, ethnic, faith, ability, and cultural communities. And these culturally specific services are crucial to effectively respond to the specific needs and barriers many survivors face." negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in and compounded by racial, gender, sexual orientation, and other forms of oppression. And whereas King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services to survivors from various racial, ethnic, faith, ability, and cultural communities. And these culturally specific services are critical to effectively respond to the specific needs and barriers many survivors face. And whereas working together to educate our community about sexual violence, supporting survivors when they come forward, speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and engaging in best practice sexual violence prevention, we can help in sexual violence in our community. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, do hereby, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and ask all residents to commit to a safe future through education and prevention for all children, young adults, and families in Bellevue."
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. We're up to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Great. All those opposed, thank you. Okay, written communications this time. City Clerk, are there any written communications to read or to summarize into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council did receive an email for written communications, and this email is from Jennifer Anderson, and I will read it into the record now. "Mayor Robinson and council members, on behalf of the nearly 2,800 member companies of the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, I am writing to express support for Ordinance 6508 to extend the life of permit applications and issued permits by 180 days. This measure will protect permits and applications from expiring during the COVID-19 emergency, allowing for projects to resume when appropriate, and save staff time from extending each active permit on a case-by-case basis. The housing industry can spur quick economic growth and reinvigorate the economy after the restrictions and quarantines are lifted. It's important local municipalities implement policies that now will allow projects in the pipeline to resume quickly and efficiently to bring much-needed housing to market. I look forward to working with staff and the council on additional steps that can be taken to limit disruptions in permitting and construction and enable the housing market to get back on track. Thank you again for your consideration of this measure. Please consider MBACs a resource for housing, and don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions." And again, that was from Jennifer Anderson at the Master Builders Association.
Thank you. Is there any more communications?
The council did receive one other email, however, it was related to the CIP update, which is not part of tonight's agenda, as it did not meet the criteria of the governor's order on the OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act, as a topic that can be discussed while the stay-at-home order is in effect.
An email that can be shared with us just through email, not during the meeting?
Yes, that is in your council@email box.
Okay.
And at that point, that concludes written communications.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to have a report from our city manager, and I just want to tell you how proud I am of our city staff and our city manager for the amazing work that they're doing, working with our small businesses and our large businesses with this economic development relief work. You're going to tell us all about it, right?
Yes. So good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members, including your packages of management brief outlining a summary of actions the city has taken to support Bellevue's businesses as well as their arts communities during this emergency, as you just referenced. Joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, the Director of Community Development, and Jesse Canado, our Chief Economic Development Officer, Brian Council, as well as the viewing public with a staff report. No formal action is being requested of the council, but questions are certainly welcome, as well as comments. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Matt to begin the staff report. Matt?
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, and Mayor Robinson, and members of the council. It's good to be with you tonight. It's been quite a couple of weeks as we have pivoted quite a bit of our work efforts within the department from, we'll call them, "normal course of business" to COVID relief. A major component of that pivoting has been in our Economic Development Group in moving away formal business services to relief services. And we're going to walk you through a whole bunch of those things this evening. Charmaine, if you can go to the next slide, we'll talk about what's going to be on our agenda this evening. As we made that transition, we've been looking at a host of different topical areas about how to go about this. And it's important, as we get into some of the specifics, early on, we identified and realized that the difference in industry clusters and business itself says quite a bit about the nature of the relief that was going to be necessary. Said another way, impact to small business whose revenue or cash flow will be substantially different than a big business, and how that business is affected by a stay-at-home order is very, very different than companies that can do a lot of work by telecommuting. And we'll talk about what our city efforts are in both areas when we get to that. Another major effort for our city staff was to be a leader in the community and the region. And what we identified early on was every city was having its own economic development staff attempt to do a whole host of things. And so one of the things that we are very proud of is we've all come together as a group, and we'll talk about the weekly and daily phone calls to coordinate so that the different entities are not being duplicative in any way relative to the service provisions that we're being able to offer. And the main goal there is to try to reach the most amount of people and to be the most efficient possible with any scarce resources that we have for relief and aid. And so as we partner with those other cities on the east side and in the region, we also look at the Chamber of Commerce locally, the BDA, One Redmond Startup 425, and all the other groups. And we'll talk about all the work we're doing with them as well. So I want to go to the next slide, Charmaine, and we'll move into some of the data and what it's showing us. Now, there's an awful lot on this slide, and I'll be happy to get this to the council. I want to hit a couple of high points and why it's important. There was a survey conducted a couple of weeks ago, put on by the Greater Seattle Partners and the Seattle Office of Economic Development. And in that survey, nearly 1,000 eastside businesses responded. That's a fairly significant number. They were contacted via email, phone, and websites, and they identified the main issues that they were primarily concerned about. 38% of the respondents were concerned about whether or not they'd be able to pay rent. That speaks directly to issues around cash flow and revenues and what this would look like coming out. They were worried about being able to pay bills, and they were worried about any temporary closures and the impact on the business. And in a second here, I'll talk about the most impacted businesses in Bellevue. Another sad component for now, we hope for a quick recovery, but 56% of the respondents' businesses reduced staff capacity in some way, and 36% have already laid off employees. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, Charmaine. And we're going to start to talk about, you know, who is most impacted, and then who is somewhat insulated, you know, as we move into our relief. The most impacted sectors, not surprisingly, are the retail, tourism, construction, and arts industries. These are the industries primarily driven by people going out and spending money in one form or another, and that represents roughly 20,000 Bellevue workers employment. The local hotels, nothing short of devastating at this point. A typical hotel pro forma shows that 75, probably more like 80% occupancy, being down at 5% or 10% or less effectively means that they are closed and not taking in any revenue at all. And restaurants doing 10% to 15% is not enough to be able to cash flow month-to-month. So again, not surprising, as we have a stay-at-home order, that these are the most impacted. And we'll talk about our approaches to those businesses and helping them in a minute. One other just comparative anecdote that's not on the slide, but I'll mention, a typical day at Sea-Tac Airport this time of year sees 52,000 passengers, and last week on the 14th, they saw only 2,500 passengers, which is roughly only 4% to 5% of a typical daily traffic. Now, switching gears, the larger employers, many of the larger employers in our community, just within the City of Bellevue, are in the tech industry, though I wouldn't say they are insulated, they are in a, have an ability to have a lot of workers work from home, and they are therefore being able to position themselves through telecommuting in a way that the businesses on this slide are not. So as a result, many of those major companies have been very philanthropic and very forthcoming in helping other businesses in the community that have been less fortunate. And when I hand it off to Jesse here in a minute, he will walk through some of those programs that those companies have been able to put in place. Flip to the next slide, Charmaine. So we've been doing a host of outreach efforts, and we are doing both inbound call assistance and outbound call assistance. And one of the things that we realized early on was that a number of small businesses didn't know where to go, or who to talk to, or how to get information to be able to get to the right people, including things as simple as how to fill out the right form with the right program. So we've had a total pivoting in the Economic Development Group to help everything from unemployment questions, how to fill out a business plan so that they can fill out the right form to look at some type of assistance package. Early on, we worked with our transportation group when we were hearing that restaurants would like to have pickup zones out on the streets, and that got implemented. And then we've got a host of other things that have happened through portals like Mini-City Hall, which is working remotely and doing quite a bit of translation services to reach those populations and help them get with our economic development staff. So we have 400 outbound phone calls that are all going out right now using not only our economic development staff, but we've actually been tapping other resources and other departments in the city to help with that, as we realize what a big effort this economic relief effort is across the entire city. So, and we'll talk more about the specifics of that here in a minute. The last thing that I want to mention, just about the overall ecosystem, there's a lot of pulling together that's occurring amongst all the professionals in economic development in the region. We are having weekly briefings and meetings with regional and national folks. We are talking with the BDA and the Chamber routinely about different plans, and this has everything to how we're taking and planning collective action, how we're sharing resources. We are looking at post-COVID-19 recovery efforts, and what it looks like to ask the community to come back out and start to shop, and start to dine, and start to plow money back into the economy. We're also spending quite a bit of time thinking about the east side and Bellevue-specific arts organizations, and we have a weekly call there focused on funding mechanisms, what Bellevue's response is going to be. Obviously, there are event cancellations right now, and no one's sure when and if or how those events are going to come back online. And so we are looking at a transition strategy for how to be successful in helping those groups stand themselves back up. So quite a bit of things have gone on here. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Canado to walk through some of the specifics in the small business and medium business support, and talk about our partnerships and collaboration with the larger businesses. And it really is a combination of all of those things and with our partner agencies that are going to hopefully allow us to pull out of this as quickly as possible. So I'm going to hand it off to Jesse now.
Thank you, Matt. Charmaine, can we move to the next slide? I would like to emphasize upfront that this has been an all-hands effort on the east side and just within the City of Bellevue organization. We've been working very closely with our internal and external partners, as Matt mentioned. We saw early on that multiple groups were working on very similar or duplicative efforts. And Bellevue is a regional leader in many areas, including economic development, and we saw a need for Bellevue to help coordinate and build collaboration amongst all of our partners to help make best use of everybody's limited resources. So since March 10th, we've been convening a weekly call with our eastside partners. It now includes staff from 25 eastside organizations, including cities, chambers, downtown associations, and tourism organizations to work collectively on deliverables. Some of those organizations are represented on the screen, not all of them, just for clarity purposes. And our efforts in that weekly discussion is to focus on joint work efforts. There are a lot of update calls that happen across the region, but this is really a working group to help develop products and services that allow each participant, participating organization, to deliver more value to their customers and members. For example, in the early days, which were only a month ago, we developed jointly a template for frequently asked questions related to the essential businesses order. And that was able to be shared amongst all the organizations for customization and rebranding so that each organization could deliver that document more quickly than if they were doing it alone. And we have several other working groups that are focused on a couple of items that I'll touch on in the next few minutes. Together, we've been able to accomplish what feels like a year's worth of work in just over a month. Because we're working on, together on shared issues, Bellevue staff is also able to dedicate more time to engagement and services for Bellevue-specific businesses. Next slide, please. In terms of outreach programs, Matt touched on a couple of them. Your economic development staff has been working to reach businesses of all sizes, types, and in all neighborhoods across the city. Tonight's discussion will largely focus a lot on our smaller businesses, because that is where the most critical need has been. But to start, I'd like to just quickly let the council know that we have engaged our 20 largest employers in the city to understand their challenges and their post-pandemic plans as well, and understand the work that they're doing to support local nonprofit organizations and smaller businesses. We've completed check-ins with Symetra, Verizon, Boeing, Amazon, Salesforce, and Smart Sheet so far, and we're working to round out the list with the others in the top 20. I'd also like to take a moment to highlight one of our largest employers. With over 3,000 employees in Bellevue, Overlake is a foundational part of the local economy and a foundational part of the local response. While many of our larger employers, as Matt mentioned, have been able to work remotely and shift their staff to working from home, the doctors and nurses and staff at Overlake are coming into the hospital every day on the front lines to help keep Bellevue a healthy community. So I wanted to make sure we highlighted them as one of our largest employers and a key piece of what makes Bellevue such a unique place. I'd also like to say that this crisis has demonstrated the value and need for a well-rounded economy and business support infrastructure that we've been able to deploy. Next, I'll touch on our outreach to small businesses, specifically small, locally-owned businesses, have been our primary focus. We've, as Matt mentioned, been able to borrow staff from our neighborhoods and parks teams. We've completed 195 outbound calls as of Friday. 38% of those reached a live person. As expected, many calls go to voicemail, as many of the businesses are closed, but we have left messages for those businesses on where to find resources in case they are checking their voicemails. We're also trying to get information out via a variety of channels, including a weekly newsletter and social media, in addition to the city's extensive comms network. An example of a small business that we were able to reach and support is Square Lotus in Factoria. It's a family-owned Vietnamese restaurant that is heavily dependent on lunchtime business from T-Mobile employees. Understandably, with T-Mobile employees working from home, they have been heavily impacted. Our callers were able to share information on the business resources available to them and connect them with additional advisors. Now they're in touch with their accountant on the work needed to access relief funds. And so those are the kinds of ways that we're able to make an impact. The Bellevue Chamber is also working with local banks and their members to ensure that the information is out there and there is speedy access to loan applications and loan advisors. They have a complimentary outbound call program that is helping us reach more businesses. Really quickly, on the creative business and cultural organization side, they're facing a host of different issues because their revenue is based on group gatherings, shared spaces, disposable income. So they've not been able to pivot online, as many of our other businesses have, and we'll touch on them again towards the end. Next slide, please. This is a program that I'm very excited to bring in front of the council tonight. We're providing some new technical assistance that officially launched this afternoon. Through our various partners and channels, we heard of the need for more assistance in navigating the maze of relief support that is out there. Information, application criteria, and availability of funds changes almost daily. Business owners, especially those without access to strong banking relationships, have been having extreme difficulty navigating and accessing these critical lifelines. So in partnership with our Startup 425 communities, those are Issaquah, Renton, Redmond, and Kirkland, we have contracted with Business Impact Northwest, a local nonprofit and community development finance institution, to provide more direct advising for our small businesses. Thanks to the support of their president and CEO, Joe Sky Tucker, and their chief program officer, Dominique Julien, these resources will be free to all businesses within those five cities. They'll be focused on equity and accessibility. They will provide one-on-one consultations for businesses, and they will be available in many languages to make sure that there's equitable access for folks who may not have languages, their English as their primary or dominant language. The advisors can help them understand the relief programs available, help them become loan-ready if they're not, and actually help them complete the loan applications if that is a service that is needed. So we are very happy that this service is now available to businesses in those five communities. There was a large messaging push this afternoon, but if there are any community leaders or business owners that would benefit from this information, we're happy to reach out to them directly as well. Next slide, please. We've also been doing a lot of work on an eastside-wide "By Now" effort to help support particularly those restaurants that are still open. About three weeks ago now, COB staff created an eastside restaurant map that promotes those that are still doing delivery and pickup service. It includes over 300 restaurants and has been viewed about 9,000 times since it launched. And so this is an eastside-wide map with support from our neighboring cities, and is accessible via the Startup 425 website at the URL at the bottom of the screen. This service is also looking to transition to a more functional GIS version, and the cities are collaborating on how to make that happen as well. Next slide, please. I'd also like to highlight really quickly this "Best of Bellevue" page that we built that collects and shares the most inspirational stories of businesses stepping up to support our community and support each other in this very challenging time. It highlights grants that are available from our larger employers, and highlights businesses that are supporting our local nonprofits, and it highlights some of the innovative ways that Bellevue is responding to the outbreak. For example, the Amazon Grants for Small Businesses are highlighted on the page, and we know that at least a couple of businesses in downtown Bellevue did receive a grant. So through this page, we're trying to highlight the silver linings in the current situation and make sure that folks understand how they can personally support or access the different resources in the community. So I think that highlights most of what we wanted to go through to bring this in for a landing. Next slide, please. We'd like to highlight and share with the council some of the challenges and successes that we've had in the first month of COVID response work. So one of the key things is that the uncertainties are big. It's a challenge to keep up with the pace of what is information that changes on a daily, sometimes hourly, basis. Bellevue is a smaller community, and we don't have the scale or reach of some of the larger agencies across the country. But working- But working with our external partners and working across city boundaries has helped us regain some of that scale and has been very fundamental to the success of business support on the east side. As I mentioned at the beginning, this has also been very much a one city effort and I'd like to thank our coworkers and parks, neighborhoods, transportation, and finance for their support in the business relief work. Next, there is an expansive volume of need. As the council knows, this is an exceptional time. And we have seen that loan and grant programs regionally and at the state level have been overwhelmed in the last month. Luckily, more relief dollars are likely on the way as Congress continues to debate the next package. But it is very unlikely that we will be able to service the the exact dollar need of every business in this community. We will do our best to make sure that all businesses in this in this city are connected to the resources available to them. We do have some difficulty in tracking who has accessed the aid that's been made available already. We do know that the SBA has provided about thirty thousand businesses in Washington with relief loans totaling about seven billion dollars. We're going to work with the SBA, the chamber, and our partners to see if we can get more Bellevue specific numbers, but that's as granular as I can get for you today. The next big challenge so far has been that each community has very distinct needs within Bellevue. We're doing our best to support language and cultural needs of our diverse communities. That's one of the reasons we chose Business Impact Northwest for the technical assistance because they have proven experience and a focus on serving women and minority owned businesses in particular. Among some small business owners, there is a reluctance to take on some of the SBA relief because it is debt technically. And even if it could be forgivable, be forgivable. They are hesitant because of the uncertainty that they can meet the forgiveness terms in the long run. So that's a challenge we'll continue to work on. We are working with groups like East Side For All, B Dan, the city's diversity staff, and other groups to help us understand the additional needs that are out there in the community, whether they be cultural, linguistic, or other access issues to help fill those gaps. An additional community that has distinct needs, we mentioned at the front end, is the arts community. They have seen also outsized revenue impacts and they face a more uncertain recovery period because their business and their their offerings really are based on large people gatherings, a large public performances, which people may be hesitant to to attend after the the current quarantine is over. Or they may be under, they may be prohibited for longer periods depending on how the economy is reopened at stages. But we will do our best to continue connecting all of the communities in Bellevue to the existing and new business resources as they become available. And with that, I will hand it back to Mac.
Thanks, Jesse. We're going to wrap up pretty quick here. You know, as we think about the next step in pivoting for our economic development efforts for the city, we're going to be moving into the time period where we're coming out of the COVID relief process here and then into the recovery process when the economy starts to kickstart back up. We know that businesses are going to have long term issues and trying to to get themselves back whole. We know that there's likely to be high levels of unemployment nationally and that's going to affect our our local labor workforce. So we are looking at proactively trying to understand what the guidelines will be established for any reopenings and how to provide information and assistance to the businesses in response to that. We are also looking at how to connect regional residents that may end up unemployed as a result of this COVID situation with job opportunities and or reskilling options and looking at our employment assistance programs and if those can be pivoted to help people get jobs coming out of this. And then we're doing quite a bit of work right now ahead or behind the scenes, working on how to publicly celebrate and support reopening of the businesses and the come back out and shop campaigns. I'm not knowing exactly how those are going to materialize, but we're doing quite a bit of work on that right now. So how about we stop there and either Jesse or I or the city management team would be happy to take any questions the council has.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. I'm going to interject something here and then we'll we'll do questions and comments. I just want to thank you very much for all that you're doing and for your presentation. I also want to thank the community for honoring the governor's order to shelter in place. We're doing that quite successfully, but we need to continue to do it. I know that we're very anxious to get the economy restarted and for people to return to work. And I'd want everybody to know that I and the deputy mayor and the city manager are in regular contact with the governor's office aggressively advocating for a plan that opens up businesses in a measured way that protects the health of our community and that the governor's office is committed to an ongoing dialogue with city government and city civic leaders as they work toward a plan. So in fact, this Monday, I and the other mayors in the region have a conversation with Governor Inslee about the continued challenges and the plans for recovery. So we will, we will get there. We will get there together. So I'm going to call on each council member in this order, Councilmember Robertson, followed by Barksdale, Newenhouse, Zahn, Lee, and Stokes. So let's start with Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I really appreciate all the work that the city staff and our leadership has been doing to make sure that our businesses can weather the storm as well as possible. I know that the SBA loans have reached their limit. There's no more money left. And we're I we're hoping for another round of funding. What can we do as a city to help our businesses make sure that they come to the get in the next round of funding? And also, what can we do to help once we are reopened to help make sure that those businesses come back? Because the last thing we need is to have empty storefronts and all of our favorite small businesses not be there once we're out of the stay home, stay healthy period. That was a question.
Yeah, sorry, Councilmember Robertson. The awkward part here is we're not sitting next to each other and can't see each other. I'll have Jesse speak to the more specifics of exactly who those businesses should talk to to get the assistance they may need technically to make sure we we get them into any process for aid and relief. Because one of the things we found out as we were first starting that this process was that that was a significant issue for some of the small businesses that were just not used to dealing with any branch of government and they weren't sure where to go or who to talk to or or how to put together the plans that were necessary to to get into the queue. So Jesse, if you can comment on that. And then I'll just mention very quickly that yeah, we we absolutely agree and I think everyone in the council agreed that getting people back into the shops and businesses is is a significant thing that we all want to to work on together. So we're putting together those marketing campaigns and working with groups like the chamber and the BDA and the businesses themselves to try to get that word out to everybody.
Yes, thank you, Mac. So on the in regards to what the city can do to help make sure that businesses get access to relief funds in the coming rounds. That is one of the reasons that we hired Business Impact Northwest to be able to provide that direct one on one technical assistance to those small businesses. We found in the the prior round that businesses were either not loan ready for a variety of reasons. They didn't know how to navigate the specific forms or that they didn't have a robust enough relationship with their business banker. So those are things that Business Impact Northwest is going to help us remedy and get our businesses lined up so they can they can put their application in to the queue earlier in the process for this next round. In particular, they'll also be able to help with the businesses thinking through some of the steps they need to take in preparation for their reopening, whether it is changes in business plan or business model, additional capital that might be needed to for essentially restart costs or other things, they will be able to help them navigate those processes and get them ready. And as Mac mentioned, once we do reopen, when the time is appropriate, the chamber is helping lead efforts to do what we're calling a welcome back campaign that will announce that Bellevue is back open for business and help highlight some of the businesses that need a little spotlight to help get them going.
That's great. I'm really happy to hear that we're already planning on that and I'm hoping that we will start the phase reopening soon for governor's office ordering that to happen. And I do also really am pleased with the collaboration that we have with these other partners, whether it's Kirkland or the Chambers of Commerce to visit Bellevue or Redmond, Issaquah, et cetera. I I know that we partner with them on economic development a lot. This seems like a much larger group. And I hope that as we do start marketing of the Bellevue's reopen for business that we continue to partner with these other organizations because it would be great if we could help each other get the whole region back up and running ASAP as soon as the governor says that we can. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Barksdale.
Right. So thank you for the holistic approaches. Get to see that we're reaching out to businesses to understand the impact of COVID, especially with the COVID. And now we're also focusing on bottom pop shops. Just one recommendation in terms of the map, I'm just curious, have you reached out to the some agencies that are like teleworking companies and share that app so that maybe they can share with their employees and support the businesses? And then my second question, or actual question is, how many bottom pop shops have closed? Do you have any idea of like the rate of closing of bottom pop shops?
So Councilmember Barksdale, it was a little difficult to hear you there. There was quite a bit of reverb, but I think I I caught all of it. And appreciate the suggestion. Yes, we'll be working on a blitz to get information to all the companies that are teleworking. And we've done some of that, but we'll be following up. You know, as it relates to knowing exactly who's open and who has closed, we don't have great data on that right now. But we are working with as many both within our own city and and know who's got business licenses and who does not. And then with groups like the Chamber of Commerce. But I'll turn it over to Jesse if we have any any more updated information on that.
Thank you, Mac. And no, we we don't have much more information than that at the moment. It's still early days and we've only been through this for about a month. We do expect to hear more information from businesses as we approach the the May timeframe for those that are struggling to pay rent and and other items. So we may be able to start collecting more concrete data on business closures in the coming weeks.
Okay, I thank you. I'd just be curious to, you know, see what that what that looks like over time.
Yes, we'll do our best to to find some of that data and be able to track it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Jesse and Mac, and a lot of great information. And thank you for moving so quickly on so many different initiatives here. And I think the communication has really been great as well, be it the emails or be it the the different channels that the comms team has available to it. So we're getting the word out and and letting as many people as possible know where these resources are. Couple of quick questions, but before that, just a just a big shout out to some of the, you know, bigger employers in in Bellevue and Jesse, I think you highlighted a few of them, but you know, I think the the Facebooks, so Microsoft, Symetra, Patriot Sound Energy, Republic Services, Amazon have all done some admirable, launched some admirable programs to help the the small business community and residents in this area. So I just want to make sure they get some recognition for that and hope they keep up those efforts as much as as much as possible to help our city during this during this pandemic. That survey, I believe, Mac, when you were discussing a thousand east side businesses, how many of those were actually Bellevue businesses? Just curious and how that relates to the data.
The the nearly thousand businesses. I thought, Jesse, do you know off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no. So what what we were able to get from community attributes, which is the consulting group that did the survey, was just the aggregate east side data for the five cities. They weren't comfortable at the time releasing the individual city data, but that is an ask we can go back to them with.
Okay, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to know what percentage or how many Bellevue businesses participated as could affect or skew my thoughts on the on the on the survey there a little bit. So yeah, that'd be great if you can track that down. The second question regarding the the Business Impact Northwest. So did we provide additional funds to startup four two five in order to engage them? Or did you working with startup forty five just shift funds from from their workshops in order in order to get them engaged? Is that how we're we're paying for that?
So each each partner city contributed funds in a different way. Bellevue, we were able to reallocate our contribution, which is about, I think, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars for the contract to be able to make that available.
Okay, so that's good. Next question is, what is their 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 bandwidth? I'm sure they have or there will be having a lot of inquiries. So how many how many Bellevue or east side businesses are they able to help? And then if they get flooded with requests, which I'm sure they will, do they have a criteria for for which companies they they are able to help and which they are not? And is it going to be limited per city as well or is it just open ended in the east side city?
So I'll answer the last question first. So at the moment, it is a general first come, first served basis in terms of when the businesses get get service. We're going to monitor that to see where where the majority of businesses are coming from and or the the type so that we can shift focus and attention or outreach as necessary. If we do find that the level of service is insufficient for the need, that will be a discussion of on whether or not we'd like to procure more more time from Business Impact Northwest.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I see this is a great program, especially to, as some of my colleagues alluded to, you know, when that next round of funding comes around, no matter what what the program is to help them get ready in order to submit their application for 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 a loan, for a grant, I think is really critical. So it'd be important to me to know that if we need to to help or fund this additionally in order to help those small businesses that need this technical services, you know, this is something that we should take a look at to make sure that we're helping as many of those Bellevue businesses as possible. Thank you for all your work again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse. Councilmembers on.
Yes, I also want to thank staff for all your hard work. It does take that personal touch of those personal outreach and check in calls to make sure that our businesses know that we're here for them and we care. And especially in conjunction with the community organizations, the community based outreach organizations to try to reach as many of the folks as possible. I understand some of the businesses may not have internet, website, cell phones. So you know, their calls are just their their landline is just ringing in their business. So whatever we can do to reach out to them will be really important. I also think that it's been amazing in terms of people helping people. So large businesses, all of the volunteers, what I see are folks that are purchasing food from our restaurants to then bring meals to those serving our community like Overlake and many others. So I think those are really good. I applaud the staff for looking at a regional approach so that if we're doing translation of materials, doing outreach, that we can share materials and really leverage our resources to reach as many businesses as we can. So I think those things are really important. A couple of of questions or comments. So the Cares Fund didn't actually provide any direct relief to small cities below five hundred thousand. So it seems like we're relying on the state in terms of some of the funds that they have, the federal as well as King County. So are we actually able to get any funds ourselves? Or are we really channeling our businesses to these different loan and grant opportunities?
That's a very good question, Councilmember. In terms of providing grants versus loans or or access to other resources, because of the gift of public funds provision in the Washington State Constitution, it's a it's much more difficult for us to be able to provide direct it's much more difficult for us to be able to provide direct grants, cash grants, to our small businesses. So, in the initial stages of the COVID relief, it's really been focused on getting our businesses access to federal funds, state funds, and funds from private companies that are making donations.
Okay, and that's why we're leveraging, working with other nonprofits outside and potentially providing grants to them?
Correct.
Okay, okay, I see. Well, I think that's going to be one of the important parts is that how we actually do advocate then for those kinds of funds. I know through my National League of Cities committee work that we are working really hard on federal advocacy to get more funds to our local cities and small business. So, hopefully, we'll actually, our voices are being heard at the federal level and we're able to get some more funding. I wanted to pivot to when we're planning for the restart because when the governor lifts the order, we will still be in this social distancing world. And I'm thinking about the fact that having been at the port in essential work now for five weeks, you know, there's been a lot of work done around how we work safely and satisfy L and I and DOS requirements. So, are we talking with our small businesses on those things they're going to need to do to get ready? Because as we reopen, both our small business as well as our construction, the world is not going to be the same. And so, I'm just, I wanted to understand what we're doing in that area.
Yes, as those types of requirements and procedures become more concrete, our goal is to, through Business Impact Northwest, the Chamber and others, be able to provide either advising or webinars or other types of information that help our businesses understand the changes that they will need to take before reopening.
Okay, yeah, that'll be really important. I know that DOS just put out some new directive on Directive 1.7 on April 7. And then for construction, there are some other documents that are in the works and being prepared that will impact the ability of the businesses in Bellevue to reopen while being safe. And whatever resources are already available in the community in terms of training to be able to just get ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers on. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I want to show my appreciation and applaud the people that are working so hard, you know, on this pandemic. And I think, you know, this is a thing that we've never seen before, you know, since 1967. So, I've seen, you know, a couple of recessions. The most one is the one that I still was working for Boeing. And Boeing laid off lots of folks. And, you know, they cut their workforce from close to 100,000 to 30,000. And we remember the signs, it's the last person leaves Seattle, turn off the light. And, you know, I was one of them. And, but I didn't leave, I stuck here. And most of the people, you know, who would stay, because that's what this area, this region is, particularly City of Bellevue, we stay. We are the small individuals, we are small businesses, we make things work for us. We adapt, we innovate, and we succeeded to do something spectacular. You know, we became entrepreneurs, startups. That's how all the, you know, inter-technology companies, you know, began. And that's how we become. Microsoft, and now we have Amazon, you know, T-Mobile, Paccar remained. So, I think this is something that's big, something we've never seen before. And it happened so fast, it's not experienced before. But we've come back, you know, 2008, there's another recession that we faced and we rose back from it. So, but it really have to remember though, you know, it's something that we have to take care of ourselves. You know, we have to take care of the community. It's the community effort. We're talking about the biggest hit relief, you know, is the small businesses, the service industry, the employees that are losing jobs because nobody's visiting restaurants. Nobody's out there doing things, buying merchandise, whether it be Bellevue Square or a food truck, or small restaurant that has, you know, 10 employees. They go from month to month, week to week. So, they have to stay. If they leave, they don't come back. Or if it takes too long, you know, Mac mentioned this recovery is going to last 16, 18 months. You know, that's a long time. So, I believe that, you know, when everybody is doing with this, I also appreciate what the mayor and the deputy mayor and city staff, obviously. I appreciate what you have done with this BusinessImpactNorthwest.org. You know, it's a good model. So, hopefully, we can do something with it and maybe, you know, see some good results. So, I personally, you know, have been working with the community. And the community has been stepping up. We've seen that. We've seen how they are donating food, donating money, they are donating masks, PPE. And, you know, there's Chinese community in particular, you know, because I happen to be available, you know, connected, they know me. So, they've been working with me, I've been helping them, and this is a good story. So, there's a group called the Chinese Chamber of Commerce in Washington State. It's a local, they're working with the local restaurants. And restaurants, they're out of business, nobody's visiting them. So, you say, what do they do with employees? The answer is easy, they can lay them off, you know, close store. But that's not what they do. Not what, they say, well, let's keep the employees working, let's making food, and let's box them up in lunches and dinners. And they donate to the medical health workers, donate to Overlake Hospital, donate to University of Washington. You know, they donated masks to City of Bellevue, you know, to the first responders. So, they did a campaign starting in first, I think, almost in end of March, up to now, less than four weeks.
Councilmember Lee, I cannot hear you. Can anybody else hear Councilmember Lee?
No.
All right, well, hold that thought, Councilmember Lee. We'll go on to Councilmember Stokes.
It's really exciting to be, and it's just kind of strange saying this, but, you know, when you get into something like this, sometimes it can be, it is awful and things are going on around you. But I think one of the things that is good, and we've, everybody's been talking about this, is how much the staff and the city, and particularly regionally, we're working together. And that's a very positive thing. And it gives me hope, and I should give everybody hope, that we will get out of this and go forward. The new normal is something that we don't know about yet, but we're laying the groundwork. Very excited about that part of it. What I'm worried about is, you know, and there's some things that we haven't talked about. And this is, it's great what we're doing, businesses and big business, small business, communities and all. We haven't talked about schools, and I'm concerned about how they survive this and how families and kids and all get through this. And we, and I want to, you know, work on this part of it. We, that's a big, big issue. And that's something that affects our future greatly. And I would like the city and the region to be more involved with that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, and we really haven't touched on it, Councilmember Lee was talking to a little bit about it and we've mentioned it. But yes, we have the big businesses and we've got to get that going, get them going. We've got to get the employment back. We've got to get the economy back. And, you know, going from the excitement of where we're going to go with all of this change and everything to, you know, the sky's falling is sobering. But yes, we have to get the businesses going, we have to get small businesses going. What concerns me and bothers me is that we talk about, yes, it's good to get people back to their jobs and all, but there are increasing numbers of people who are being traumatized by this situation. And, you know, the proclamation tonight addressed some of those issues. And I think it's something I hope we don't put on the back burner. We've got to help people get back, get our neighborhoods, get our neighbors and people in the community back into life and back into working. And the people who were having struggles and really on the, you know, going down in the community before this are even more impacted. And I think we have to have a breadth of concern and impact and ability to do things that's not just limited to, let's get the businesses back and get people hired back and that. And we're going to do that. And this, having this group together and having all this outreach is just amazing. And I applaud the city and we're working together on this and it's pretty good about this. And we're going to be great there, but we cannot forget those people who are suffering even more now, who are suffering beforehand. And we cannot just think that somehow or other they're going to survive. And it's something I hope we spend time and energy on and spend different kind of resources on, and the community itself. And there are a number of groups, and I think we've all helped in those, who have gotten together and made some impact and get food out and help people. But we just have to not let that get put aside because when this is over and business is back in, we're going to have even a bigger, bigger problem than we have now in terms of people who are in need and who are marginalized and who are not able to, even though they're in the country, benefit from what we have in this country. The third thing is, I am concerned about and want us to be looking at, and I know we're just talking about what's happening in this time period, but keep in mind that things like parks, things like infrastructure projects, things like that we've been working on that, that are not getting our businesses back in business are very important too because there are a lot of jobs related to that. And so, I think we have to, you know, we're going to be talking about the budget and it's going to be tight, but we have to keep Bellevue moving, keep Bellevue doing things that are helpful and really help the community and help people. At the same time, make sure that when we get through this, Bellevue will continue to be the place you want to be. And so, just, you know, we'll be talking about those in the budget and all, but that's something I want to really keep us focusing on. And I'm really glad to see the recognition and work on the creative economy because that is so important. It's so important to keeping people here and attracting people here, and we know that. And I hope we just don't wake up, you know, some months down the line next year and oops, what happened to that group? You know, what's happening to Bellevue? So, again, we have to keep that in focus. And the last thing I want to say was, like, this is really exciting about this, working together with these other cities. You know, I've talked about this a long time. I think the Innovation Triangle has been fantastic. It's small in a sense and focused. Having what I kind of call the innovation crescent is what we're kind of laying out here, is putting, getting it together. That's a great piece that will help now. And something I think is already being successful will be really important to us in the future. And the region is what's important. Bellevue, we want to make sure Bellevue keeps being what it is, but the region makes Bellevue, and we make the region. So, it's a very symbiotic relationship. And having the connections with the cities from, and, you know, even up to Bothell perhaps, but all the way around, all of us working together and getting written involved is really great. And Issaquah, I think that's going to be, again, something that we did in this time period, that we're going to look back and say, not only did we really help things go, but we, again, created something innovative going forward. I mean, I always like to look at what are the positives we get out of a bad situation? And I think we have some that we're laying the, you know, the foundation for. And when you get into something like this, you can either focus on just, you know, stopping the hemorrhage, as long as you can focus on that, and also making it better. And I think we're doing that. And I'm very proud of the city and the staff and the council for doing this. And, you know, we can ask a lot of questions. I think you're really been focused on this and it's good. But let's just remember that we're trying to bring this back, but we have the opportunity in this to really have, continue to have that impact on a great city that we were talking about before this thing hit. So, again, you know, keep working on it, but let's remember to focus on everything that's going to make us come out of this and look back and say, wow, we not only survived, but we actually came out of this in a, maybe a different, better place. Those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. And although this was an economic, regional economic presentation, you tied in really well how important the arts, the schools and the parks are to our local economy. I think that Councilmember Stokes brought up a really good point about the schools. I know the schools are just, Bellevue School District, the Lake Washington School District are doing a remarkably good job. But I wonder, City Manager, if we might be able to have a presentation on that at an upcoming meeting, maybe have somebody from Bellevue School District come down and tell us about the challenges and their successes and how this looks for the future?
I certainly will reach out to the Bellevue School District Superintendent and I make that request.
Thank you. I believe we have Councilmember Lee back. And I'm wondering, Councilmember Lee, do you have just a few more things you wanted to finish up with, or did you feel like you had your say? Okay.
Mayor, can I interrupt for one quick second?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I just, it'd be great if we could get Councilmember Lee back on. But his story about the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, I was just wondering if Jesse might be able to highlight that story on the Best of Bellevue.
Oh, yeah.
Page. I think that'd be, yeah, I think that'd be great to highlight their donations or equipment, what they're doing for our restaurants. I think it'd be great to highlight that.
Yes, we can certainly look to that. We'll connect with Councilmember Lee about the appropriate.
Okay, terrific. And maybe there's even, maybe there's even an opportunity to partner with them as well as they support our Bellevue restaurant. So, thank you for looking into that.
Now, thank you for that recommendation. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, consent calendar is approved. And now, we're going to move on to Ordinance 6508. Mr. Miyaki, can you introduce this for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson and Councilmembers. Ordinance 6508 extends the life of certain complete and issued building permit and applications as well as complete and issued clear grade permit applications in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, the Director of Development Services, to provide a brief staff report and to answer any questions that you might have with regard to this ordinance. After Mike's report, we are seeking council action on Ordinance 6508. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike. Mike?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and City Councilmembers. The, you can push to the next slide, Charmaine. Before the council, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, is an ordinance that would extend the life of permit applications and issued permits by 180 days. Steph is recommending adoption of this ordinance, and I'll give you a little bit of background. Next slide, please. The Governor's Stay Home, Stay Healthy Order was issued on March 23rd, and that suspended construction for most residential and commercial projects. They were not considered to be an essential activity. So, the rapid growth we're experiencing in Bellevue includes a large number of projects, both large and small, and the construction has, you know, essentially been suspended there. However, the clock on the permits that the city issued for those projects continues to advance even though they're suspended. So, we have a large number of permit applications also moving through the system. And while the city can process the applications electronically, And while the city can process the applications electronically, uh, some applicants are, are running into challenges on their end, completing the needed documents or reports necessary to reach permit issuance. Some of them require field visits or field geologic testing. Um, obviously, just like all businesses out there, running into challenges uh with, with a remote workforce being efficient and completing the work. Uh, so again, our, our applicants are bumping into some challenges. Uh, but again, as I mentioned, the city is continuing to process all the applications in the system uh remotely and electronically. Uh, the city code sets a maximum limit for the life of permit applications and permits that are issued. For applications, that's a year and a half, and for an issued permit, it's for three years uh from the point of issuance to the point where they need to have the project completed. The ordinance before the council tonight would add an additional a hundred and eighty days to the life of building and clearing grading permit applications. And then an additional a hundred and eighty days for issued building permits and clearing grade permits. So that additional time would give relief to the developers, contractors, homeowners, and giving them additional time to kind of regroup as we come through uh the COVID nineteen uh emergency and move their way through the rest of the way through the either permitting process or restarting the construction and finishing uh construction prior to when the permits would expire or the applications would expire in the system. Uh, avoiding the, the time and cost to go back in and reapply uh to get the work done, so uh, it's a significant benefit um, uh, or, or lift for applicants and our, our permit holders. Uh, this is something that, uh, the connection the council took. Uh, some may recall back uh in the recession where uh council acted to extend permit applications in and issued permits in a similar way back then. Uh, so there is a group, a very small group of permits that I do want to note here, that wouldn't receive the extension. And those are the applications that were involved with the civil violation process. And that's where um work on or construction work occurred without the required permits being obtained first. In those cases, um, we weren't able to gain voluntary compliance, so they moved into a civil violation process. And in that process, we set very specific timelines for uh, uh, making an application for the permit, obtaining the permit, and then finalizing the necessary inspections. Uh, so the timeline in the civil violation process, we certainly will adjust that uh as impacted by the COVID nineteen uh emergency uh to ensure that we're providing additional relief so they can get the work done as well, but again, um, the timeline set for those permits in the civil violation process are well within the three years or the one and a half years that are currently in the code. So I just wanted to, to call that out as a very small subset of permits that would not be getting uh the extension. I also want to mention a couple of other things that are related here to working to assist our, our developers, homeowners and contractors. Um, our land use permits uh are not included in, in what's above the, the what we call process two or the entitlements, which are land use decisions, and those have a public process element associated with them. And in this environment where we've got uh challenges with the open public meetings requirements, um, we are uh working our way through, trying to find solutions so we can make sure that all of our applications and decisions can be uh finalized through the process. We are, again, working in the background, moving all of those as far as we can, but again, when there's a public uh engagement piece or the potential for a, an appeal to the hearing examiner, uh, that's a barrier that we're working to resolve. I just want to note that we are staying clo- in close contact and working in partnership with the builders and the developers, trying to look ahead at when construction will be allowed to resume. Uh, working together and talking about the standards and operating procedures that we'll put in place to ensure the safety of workers and our inspection teams that are out there. I'm confident that we will find a good solution, there's an awful lot of work going on in the background, some of it may have heard about already from other sources. And the goal is so that we can move, once the order is lifted, we can quickly transition back to work uh and, and get our construction projects back underway out there. And also, just another quick note, as some council members may know, every three years, the state updates building and fire codes. Um, this year it was scheduled to occur on July first. Um, we worked through a number of sources um and contacted, uh, try to influence essentially the governor's office asking for an extension of that deadline or that implementation date from July first to November first, and the governor uh did issue a proclamation making that move to extend the adoption of giving applicants or giving um developers additional time to prepare their documents to get into the system so they can vest under the current code, uh, and also uh, uh, allow for additional time in the training and uh publication of documents. Um, you know, getting a place, the materials and supply chains uh to meet the new standards, et cetera, so there are some uh steps that have been taken uh to try to support our, our builders and our developers out there uh in trying to smooth the path uh so that when the order is lifted, we can all get back to work and do it in a safe way. Uh, so that's the comments that I have uh for the ordinance this evening, if you click to the next slide. Um, looking for council um uh adoption this evening of uh ordinance six-five oh eight extending the life of uh applications and issued permits.
Okay, thank you very much, and man, you, you guys are just working overtime right now, and we just want to thank you so much for the good work you're doing. Um, I don't know if there's any comments or uh questions, but I will go down in this order. Uh, Councilmember Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Zahn, Lee Stokes, Robertson, and then lastly me. So um, you don't need to comment, but uh if you have a question or a comment, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Barksdale.
Uh, no comment from me.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse?
Yeah, just a quick uh comment, no questions. Um, yeah, this is uh straightforward, makes a lot of sense, something that we should do, want to thank um Councilmember Robertson for bringing this forward and getting this on our agenda, it's, I think it's a right thing to do and look forward to passing it.
Councilmember Zahn?
Um, yes, um, I do have a couple of comments and then a question. You know, I've been in this industry now for thirty years, and we, I want to just make sure that when we look at the permits that are currently have already been issued, that the hundred and eighty days is sufficient. Uh, mainly because what I'm seeing is that we have had some, because of the projects that have all been suspended, there are some supply chain challenges with plants that have been closed, how long it will take for them to restart some of the materials that come from other states and countries that may also have their own um COVID closures and impacts. Um, how long it takes for contractors when they restart to have updated COVID safety plans. Um, getting our own staff being prepared for the fact that the COVID is still going to be there when this construction is restarted. So with those pieces, Mike, what I wanted to understand is um, if the hundred and eighty days is not sufficient, because what we see is that it's going to take some of the uh contractors longer to um close any funding gaps, make modifications to their construction means and methods. Is there opportunities to extend it further at a later date?
Uh, Councilmembers, I, I appreciate your, your observations about all of the influences that are playing in the background that can impact the ability of projects to proceed. Um, so absolutely, the council could elect to uh extend permits again. Um, in fact, back in the recession, the council acted twice uh to extend permits um back to back, so allowing additional time for projects to get their feet back under them as recovery began. So if we find that um these projects are really running into trouble getting started because we can certainly come back to council and um discuss additional extensions.
Yeah, I think that'll be really important, because by the time it reopens, if it reopens on May fourth, it will already have been forty days of time that they've been suspended. And then just seeing the level of potential inefficiencies and impacts for those projects that are still essential and going. Um, I think that there's going to be challenges when we restart. So being as ready as possible and supporting those contractors during this time will be super important. So I'm really glad that we're taking up this item and making sure that um our contractors are um going to be taken care of. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee? I know Councilmember Lee was with us just a minute ago, because I saw his nice face on my screen, so Charmaine, is there a way to bring Councilmember Lee on?
This member Lee is unmuted at the moment. Councilmember Lee, can you hear us?
Uh, I lost you for a while, but I just got on, yes.
We are.
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Stokes?
No, I think it's great, ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson, I want to thank you for advocating for this. Um, I'm sure you have something you'd like to say.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, thanks to staff for turning this around so quickly. And um, yes, as Councilmembers on inquired, we can do this again if it's needed, I hope it's not needed, that the economy comes booming back. But if it doesn't, and people still need some help, we can do it again. We also can um extend land use entitlements if we need to, and I assume staff will be keeping um their eyes on that. Uh, Director Brennan, is that correct, that you'll be watching that in the months ahead?
Yes, absolutely, we are looking closely at the entitlements now. Uh, also, when we issue land, just a real quick point, when we issue a land use decision and the building permit is submitted, the life of the entitlement rides with the building permit, so a lot of those entitlements are attached to building permits now, so they're pretty good shape, and they'll get the benefit of the extension that you're considering tonight. But yes, we are absolutely looking at all of the applications in the system.
Great, thank you. Um, so yeah, I'm very supportive of this, I think this is going to help all of the people who are building in Bellevue. It all, i- i- as far as actually helping them have more time to get their supply chain, their people back to work, et cetera. But the other thing that, the other reason this is important to do is that this sends a message. A lot of these developments have funding partners, and this sends a message to those funding partners, whether it's a bank or an investor, that Bellevue wants to help these developments happen, wants to make them successful, and wants to do what we can to facilitate them coming back. So um, I'm looking forward to the governor lifting the construction ban, I'm hoping he does it before May fifth. Um, so that people can start getting back and building, my goodness, the weather's been terrific. We should, this is the building season, we need to get to it. Uh, Mayor, I'd also like to ask if I may make the motion to approve this uh when the time is right.
Thank you. Um, so I, you know, I know we all want everyone to be successful in Bellevue, whether it's our residents who are living here or the, or the businesses or the developers. It's such a delicate balance. And the governor's having to really work hard with all the data he's been given to make sure that we don't open so fast, that we just have another wave and shut everything down for longer. But I'm really looking forward to a well-thought-out reopening of our economy and getting our businesses back in action, and I think that this will help that move forward successfully when the time comes, and hopefully that soon. So uh, Councilmember Robertson, would you like to make a motion to adopt ordinance sixty-five oh eight?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance sixty-five zero eight extending the life of certain complete building permit applications, complete clearing and grading permit applications, issued building permits, and issued clearing and grading permits.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the ordinance sixty-five oh eight passes. Thank you very much, I really appreciated everybody's uh just uh your thoughtful comments and all the hard work that you're doing every week advocating for the citizens of Bellevue. Doing a really good job, we will all keep it up, and hopefully we will regroup um sooner than later. Okay, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.